Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Thank you for being here. Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the district's board of directors to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas, September 28, 2022, at the hour of 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the office of the district on September 23, 2022, at 3:00 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-041-551-050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. Present, we have Dr. LaLawn, myself, Mr. Friedman, and Mr. Donahue in attendance. If I may please get everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the daily blessings you've bestowed on us and for bringing us together once again to discuss the business of the water district. Lord, we ask for your continued guidance as we go through the agenda so that we can make the right decisions that will benefit our customers. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Thank you. Daisy, can I get a little help? For the record, we have Mr. Starkey and Mr. Butter joining the meeting. Gives us a full board in presence. That takes us to item two. Item three, invitation to the audience for public comment. Where's the staff, board? You want to add anything? Say anything, comment? Hold your name for the record, please.
Hello, this is the water district. Just real quick, guys, just want to thank you for passing the budget meeting. I know we had some tough decisions today and raising water rates is pretty hard right now with everything going up. So on behalf of the staff, just want to thank you guys for doing that. And we have a long, hard year coming up, with all the challenges coming up, but let's assure you we'll be working hard for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you. Anyone else add anything? Let's carry along to item four, consider and discuss for possible approval of the minutes for the regular meeting from September 14, 2022.
So, second.
Motion made by Mr. Donahue, signed by Mr. Starkey, or all those in favor?
Aye.
They are not opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item five, general manager's report, Carlos.
Yes, Chairman, members of board, I'd just like to remind you tomorrow morning at 8:00 we will start the groundbreaking in these property and it's going to be right along Port Coates here, towards the back of the baseball park. There's a little back there. We put some signs later today or early in the morning if it gets better. So you'll be off and go back there and find out where you want to stand. We have a big tent out there just in case it rains or sunny in the morning. But we'll be there early tomorrow morning. Hopefully we started at 8:00. It's the only tent, but that's great. We invited a chamber commerce of both cities, the Villavieja, all the entities in the area. So hopefully we'll get a quite bit of people up. And the next one that I have, the reservoir levels, if you can see the information that I posted in there, that requirements for termination would be 30 days, 30 consecutive days after it reaches a 25%. And you see the second page where I added the date, I put a new page up there. 30 days would be tomorrow on the 25% that we had on August 30th, 25.2% when it's starting going up and reaching possibly, today is 31.9 at the very bottom. So that's 29 days right there. So tomorrow it could reach 32. So we probably have to go away with the phase three.
Should we review those drought restrictions for next year? I mean, they're going to keep coming back and what we should do or maybe.
We updated the drought management.
Right, but again, for next year.
We all need a copy of that, but we can review it prior, I guess, before summer starts. Usually that's when we get mostly the drought.
Right, but I mean, anything for next year? And I mean, should we look at it again going forward? It's just a comment.
It's up to you. If you want to, we can bring it up maybe March. I would say March, we prepare for the summertime because that's when we get the most consumption is June, July, August. So at least prepare for that part.
For now, just know that there's a slip and slide party at Dr. LaLawn's this weekend, so that'll start promptly at 8:00 AM to celebrate lifting a phase three, anyway. Yeah.
No, just my kids are. We can see that. Let's move along to item six, presentation by Seven Seas Water Group on desalination treatment plant.
Yes, they did a presentation a month ago or so, but I don't think the full board was present and they weren't present either because they were in Zoom. So I said, you need to come if there's any questions, I'll ask you right off. Mr. Richard Whiting.
Welcome.
I was here for that. Me?
I was here.
And you?
Yeah.
Mr. Donahue? Why we got to bring up old attendance?
Can you state your name and business for the record, please?
Certainly. I'm Richard Whiting. I'm the Vice President of Business Development for the Seven Seas Water Group. I'm here to talk to you today about the possibility of delivering your proposed seawater desalination project via the public-private partnership form of project delivery. So, members of the board, district staff, thank you for the opportunity this afternoon. As our General Manager mentioned, I did go over some of this. I have changed it a little from last month, so there's something new for others. So just, I'm going to briefly go through who we are. I mean, if you've heard that before, a brief outline of what public-private partnerships we are about, and then just how your project could be delivered with that method. So who are we? Well, Seven Seas Water Group is a Morgan Stanley Infrastructure Partners company, so we have all of that backing behind us. Morgan Stanley acquired us in 2020, a couple of years ago now, because they recognize the value of the services and solutions that we give by optimizing lifecycle costs of water and wastewater treatment plants via long-term contracts. And we offer what we actually trademarked at the time is water as a service solutions. And we really believe we're unique in our focus in building long-term partnerships with our clients, and we aggregate more than 230 years of operations and maintenance experience with membrane-based water treatment plants. So moving on, again, I won't go through all of this, but we have actually been running the Seven Seas since 1997. But the key thing to point out here is the larger text in the top right. Group company, AUC, is based in Houston and owns and leases out over 150 wastewater plants, predominantly through Texas for muds, this type of size, these package treatment plants. And we, as Seven Seas, have 19 public-private partnership contracts. So just talking about what is P3. Well, public-private partnerships are long-term contractual relationships. And the main parameters for consideration are, first and foremost, aligned interests and aims between the private partner and the public. So in this case, you'd like a new water supply. Maybe you have other concerns, how you're going to get it delivered. Do you have experience working about? We have that experience. We can bring that to the table. You want a guaranteed water supply? We would like to supply you with that guaranteed water supply. And we really believe we can bring our aims together. The next point I have on there is project financing, because most people focus on the financing section. And yes, you have private sector capital and debt versus public sector financing options. But the key thing with P3s is it does allow the use of both sets of financed deliverability for the project. And I'll come to that later about how that would work for you. But also, when thinking about, because a lot of people are still getting in their heads, well, we're paying a premium for the private sector equity, at least. Is this risk allocation and transfer? What are you getting for paying that premium? Well, you're transferring the project delivery risk onto the private sector. You're transferring the process risk, treatment process risk, onto us. You're transferring the long-term operations and maintenance risk onto us. So, and also the long-term compliance and with the permits, et cetera, we take on. So all you need to worry about is you're receiving that water, the guaranteed price and the guaranteed quality everywhere. And you have that long-term cost security. We're giving you a price. There will be an index, some related index increase each year. But apart from that, that's it. You know what your cost of order is going to be for the long term. And coming to that payment, how is payment normally done in these contracts? Well, you can do it by a price per volume. This particularly suits water treatment plants, desalination plants, where it's a dollar a price per thousand gallons produced, delivered to you, that you then take and sell on to your customers. It can be a facility charge and a variable operations charge. That's more typically for wastewater treatment plants. This is a bit more difficult. Do you base that on the flow coming in? The flow actually treated, the flow being discharged? So that's normally a facility charge. And then I have at the end there concession charge. So if you feel very strongly that you really would like to own the asset, really don't like the idea of the private sector owning the public sector asset, selling water, the amount that we invest can be viewed as a concession fee upfront in exchange for a 15-year-plus concession where we operate and maintain and protect that investment. It's a matter of who actually owns the asset. And a key thing there, we talk about P3, saying, well, why do you need this P3 legislation? And in Texas, it's Chapter 2267 of the government code. It's because what that legislation does is it overcomes the typical municipal code that restricts one government placing a future government in debt via a contract with the private sector. And it really gets over those various issues in municipal. So coming to why P3, I have a few quotes here, and I mentioned the finance before, and really there are other items. You don't do a P3 because you don't have the money. You do it because you've looked at the lifecycle cost of the asset, you've looked at the benefits and costs that go beyond the financial side. As I say, that transfer of risk, how comfortable are you as a client taking on that risk? As opposed to how do we transfer that to someone that has that experience? And a couple of things here, again, why? This is a study at the top. Both these numbers are from McKinsey. In Europe, where there's a lot more P3 contracts, they'd be saying, when compared to the traditional design bid-build approach, typically you can reduce lifecycle costs by around 20%, a reduction of 70% in project budget overruns, and a reduction in 65% of scheduled overruns. So then if you're taking out a bond issue, you start paying for that bond while you're doing everything else. If your plan is six months late over a two-year initial period, that's another six months you're paying bonds and you haven't had the order to sell on to your customers. And so it can make quite an impact to overall cost. And then today in Australia, they've got 54 P3s. They're looking for this particular thing. They're saying only 1% of those went over budget, but they typically beat the schedule by an average of 3%, whereas traditional approaches were on average 24% late. So again, it's that delay and the fact that there are financial costs to that delay, no matter which form of finance you're actually using to get these projects done. So coming back to what we do, well, we really emphasize these long-term partnerships. We offer this water as a service solution. As I mentioned before, we have more than 230 years' experience, operations and maintenance of these types of plants. And so we design and build to optimize the lifecycle costs. And so the difference between doing a typical EPC or design bid-build, we're not going out for bids for lowest cost and therefore perhaps lowest quality if the bids actually meet the specification. We're saying, we know what we need to put in to lower that oversold lifecycle cost. And typically then, that's higher specification equipment from there. We have a feedback loop from our operations and maintenance people. We standardize across our desalination plants. Again, we build that in, we bring down the costs of everything. And obviously, we do finance projects and with both debt, equity, bonds, if it's longer term projects, through the Morgan Stanley section. And coming back, this is a major item again, where we have been able to demonstrate to clients time and again that we can sell them water at a lower unit cost they can produce themselves. Our plants are available more than 97% of the time. And to give you some idea, the industry standard is 85%. So even from day one, our plants are functioning 12% better. It means we're producing water 12% more of the time, right? And so by the time you spread that over the lifecycle cost and the amount you've invested in the product, it's why our unit cost is lower. And, you know, we have signed the first reverse osmosis plant, P3 contract, in the state of Texas. It's with the city of Alice. It was signed last year for a 3 million gallon per day brackish desalination plant. And the city of Alice chose the P3 project delivery for the plant because, A, it was a lower cost than their traditional design bid-build approach when they looked at the plant. The project delivery risk was transferred to us, which again, they were happy about, and also it provided a guaranteed future budget. They were very concerned. What happens if we mess up? What happens if we have to replace the membranes? How much is that going to cost? How many of you budget for this? What's going to happen? With our pricing, it's all covered. They just don't have to worry about it. It's our problem if we mess up. We have to replace and get it. We only get paid if we are producing the contractual volume and quality of the water. So we're currently on that project awaiting a discharge permit. We've worked through all the way with TCQ. We're actually discharging to a creek, so it has been a bit more advanced than discharging to a disposal well. It's administratively complete. We expect to get the permit in another three, six months and then start construction. And on this one, talking again about the financing, the project is a mix of private sector finance for the actual plant, that's from us, and SRF funding for the other works. So the wells, the connecting pipelines, discharge pipeline is all being financed by the city with SRF funds, because that is a cheaper option, putting pipes in the ground. There are plenty of companies out there that can do that. You've worked with them before. It's what you do as water districts, right? The actual plants are something a little different. And in that case, we worked with the city engineer to coordinate those state loans and program with Water Development Board. Again, if it was you, through your bond issue, whatever, obviously, we'd be working with you to align those schedules and the programs to get those works done. So looking at the P3 option for you, obviously, yes, we're quite happy to stand here and say, we can deliver a seawater RO desalination plant for you via the P3 delivery. And I gave this about a month ago as to the budget pricings. We looked at it for a 3 million gallon per day plant, just under $4 spooling power, about $4.50 per thousand gallons, including power. I know someone there, I believe, perhaps the vice chair, asked what the current cost of order was. Staff have said that recently in a workshop, and I have that on a graph afterwards to demonstrate where this fits. Now, that pricing there includes the financing, the design, the construction, the commissioning, and 15 years' operation maintenance by us of that plant. There would be an annual CPI-based tariff increase, but that does allow you accurate budgeting every year. And what we're suggesting is you could use part of your approximately $15 million available funding from this bond issue that you have out there to supply the 1,400-foot, 24-inch intake pipeline to the plant limits. And again, I'll show this on the flat. The connection from the plant limits to the distribution system and also to the discharge pipeline. And I've got that possible extension discharge pipeline. Again, I'll talk about that when I have the [inaudible]. And so my engineers had a look at that. They believe for the intake pipeline, you're looking at around $4.5 million. Perhaps for these other works, another half to $1 million for those other works would be your responsibility to put into that. We would finance the actual plant. And we would work with you and can do all the necessary permits and permissions. And again, I know that was a question raised last time. We can actually execute that as a phase one of the project. So we strongly believe that we can secure those permits more efficiently, lower cost, faster time than traditional way to go about it. We've obviously dealt with TCQ very recently with the city of Alice discharge permit. We've been monitoring very closely what's been going on in Corpus Christi with their discharge permit, all the issues that came up with that, and what is and isn't expected. We're very confident, we know just what needs to be done. And also within that, current requirements from TCQ are for a physical pilot plant, and that pilot has to be the same form of a process that the full-scale plant would be. We started off by doing small containerized seawater RO. We can easily drop in at that point and drop one in and do the physical permit, the physical plant within that as part of that permitting process. And what we're saying is if we did that as a phase one, once it was completed, we're quite happy to disclose to you this was the cost. And it would then be your choice, we could say, look, we can spread that over the 15 years as a price per thousand gallons. This is the impact it would have on top of just the plant. Or you could try and say, no, you know what? We'd like to pull down another, whatever it may be, a few plus a million dollars from the bond issue and just pay you now and stick with the price that it was. But we're quite happy to work either way with you on that. But as I say, we strongly believe we could get that done a lot more quickly and at lower cost. And if you went the traditional route, trying to get all of this [inaudible]. So going back to that pricing, so at the workshop, your district staff gave you what the cost of order had been for the last four years. That's from the town side. And as you can see, the average cost increase from 2018 to 2021 has actually been just over 14.5%. So the blue line going up is if it continued increasing at 14.5%. I thought that was perhaps a little unreasonable to show, so I looked at the lowest annual increase in those four years. That was 6.2%. So the gray line shows from now a 6.2% per year increase. And the red line is that budget price that we've given the seawater RO plant. So I think it's reasonable to assume that your cost of order would be somewhere within the cone between that blue and gray line. And so actually, that price we're saying, bearing in mind that the permitting is probably going to take 18 months, you've then got 18 months of construction, you're easily looking at three years before water's flowing. By that time, your costs internally for your [inaudible] are probably there and there about the cost of the desal water. So it's really not a million miles away for a drag-proof guarantees. And so just looking at these locations, so you can see there that the yellow pin in top left is where your plants are right now. The first yellow pin across to the right is really the proposed intake location. And the one at the bottom is where your current discharge is for your wastewater treatment plant and can be combined with the brine or concentrate from the RO plant. Now, my engineers have had a look at a number of reports done by the Corps of Engineers in this area, and I know they have a bit of concern that at high tides, certainly, perhaps there could be some flow back from the discharge to that proposed. So perhaps that intake needs to be moved up into that inverted Y just above, or the discharge pipe could be extended a short distance to the south to make sure that there's none of that mixing. That would all come out, necessary modeling that's required for the permitting anyway. But it is something that we've noted and again, are very happy to work through with you and the [inaudible]. So again, this is where your current plant is right now, and as you can see, you've got some bare land to the north of it. And so we've had a look at that and said, well, okay, this is the general layout of what we require and how the 3 MGD seawater desal plant fit in within there. And that's looking at it in a bit more detail. So you can see the three things in the center of the drawing. Each one is one train that can produce 1 million gallons per day. So that would be what your 3 million gallon per day seawater desal [inaudible]. I believe, so [inaudible] too much? So if you have any questions?
How quickly before the Alice plant is up and running, or do you know?
Yes, so we expect, so we expect within two years, water will be planned from there.
Okay, start that 2021, right?
We did, yes. So we, it took a bit longer to get the permitting application than we were expecting because sometimes the creek is dry, sometimes not. So we, there are various things we had to look at. It's administratively complete in there. So depending whether they take three to six months, and quite honestly, we'd probably quite happily start construction, but because some of it comes down to the city and the Water Development Board, they want to wait until the permit's there. And so, but it should take about 18 months then, we'll try and do it quicker.
How much water are they using now?
They're using, the average is around 3.5 over the year. Sometimes it can go up to five or six even at peak times. But they're putting all of that in from City of Corpus Christi right now and treat it themselves. And with the cost of their raw water and their internal costs of treating that water, we're actually able to demonstrate that we can sell them treated brackish water at a lower cost. And they've got a guaranteed drag-proof supply because they're very concerned as well. Corpus gets impacted by the drive, then they get restricted.
What's your most successful project?
All of them, I have to say. I can honestly say that every single project we've done, so all been expanded and have all been extended into it. And we typically do that. Any forms of contract, we do say, you know, allow for us, we'll happily expand the plant to suit, and then it either increases the price or we extend it to it. And all of them, we have not been cut off or discharged from any project. They're all running. I think perhaps, talk to success, we took over a plant in the Caribbean, in Saint Martin, that had been built and run by a French company, and were able to take it over, improve it, and actually increase the volume it was producing by about 50% and reduce the unit price to the client to about 75% of this original plant. So I'd have to say, if we put one poster project up there, it was, you know, this is how we can do it, because we brought in that optimization, the standardization for all of the plants.
What's the biggest company in the world that does this?
Probably the largest. Let me think. Yeah, but they just have equipment, you see. So you've got to be a little, it tends to be consortium for the really large projects. You know, some of the largest projects, there were a few in Australia and a few in the Middle East. So you have the likes of, you know, IDE Supply, all the equipment, Axionna does a lot of the work as well over the construction, but they tend to be involved in very huge projects, right?
What's the range you guys think?
We tend to do, right now, our sweet spot is up to about 20 million gallons a day. I'd say 25 million gallons a day. We've been able to demonstrate time and again that we can competitively beat [inaudible] price. We are looking at larger and larger plants, how we compete. You get to a certain size, then it's, you know, it's, everybody's pretty much there. It's just who plays about with the power usage you would ever bring that secures the project, right?
What's your biggest one right now?
Our largest is 10 million gallons a day right now as a seawater plant. We have a 30 million gallon per day, a traditional water plant, Panama, but the largest desal is about 10 million gallons a day in Trinidad.
There's a lot of creating projects.
Yes, yeah, that's where the company started, really. They tend to run out of water once they [inaudible].
Sure.
I see a trip.
By all means, for more than welcome.
And all the people in this room, if they need our [inaudible].
Our longest, so we're about 17 years, so it must be about 16 years. That's in Turks and Caicos. But talk about this, you know, we, in the US Virgin Islands, we supply all of the water on the islands. So it's all of the drinking water, all of the water for the power utility, everything, all got converted to reverse osmosis, and we supply it all via three plants in the US Virgin.
You guys, are all your operators onsite? Are they contracted out by you? Are they subs or they're actually?
No, they are staff. They are staff, and what we do is we tend to move them around, so they're all trained on more than one plant. Not only does that mean then if something happens on Monday, they may well have seen it somewhere else, but it means if we have issues in one location, we can move staff across and continue. And so what we've done is really optimized the day-to-day operations and also the preventative maintenance of these plants by standardization to make sure everything we have is on SCADA as well and we can monitor. So it doesn't necessarily mean we have teams at night unless the client really demands it, but it means we can monitor people that are on call, so if there was a problem, they're there within 10 minutes, right? As I say, we can swap, and we would look to do the same here. We did a plant here, for example, we're going to be in Alice, we hope to be in other places. We would make sure that operators were interchangeable and so therefore ensure that you always had your waters.
If people are onsite operators, like, [inaudible].
Depends on the size of the plant, but.
It's like ours, like a three.
Oh, like yours, maybe three people.
Like full-time, you guys are going to staff them down?
That's right. We'd have, we'd have an operations manager and perhaps three operators. And then we would roll them through on a, on a whatever basis.
Very interesting.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And questions, comments? Anyone else have anything to add or discuss to this?
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you very much, very informative.
Where's your, where'd you come from? To be here?
Oh, I came, I came from South Florida.
Good time to be here. Yeah, you might want to hang out a day or two.
My niece is in Cape Coral right now.
We're good.
Let's move to item seven, Director of Operations Report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm sure you've all heard about the water line that got fixed under the bridge. And I just wanted to show you all some pictures and give you an estimated cost of what it was. This was the, kind of going through the pictures, this is pretty much where we got started. And they went in there and identified where the pipe was compromised. So they started fixing it up. The crew members that were involved in this were distribution and construction. We also had the safety officer out there as well as there were a couple, there was one member from the water department that was out there. So it was pretty much of a joint effort. They did a lot of work on it and got it back online. And that was pretty much, the last picture shows where they finally wrapped it up. And they tested it, they left it open for a few days before they wrapped it up to make sure there wasn't leaking anymore. The cost of the scaffold is what the quote they gave us, we'll be bringing back to you all for ratification, is around $27,000. And then we have also the, where they blocked off one of the lanes, the cost of that was $5,800.
Who builds it for that tech staff?
No, this is from Texas Highway Systems, Inc. They're out of Eddie Burke. No, we just needed to get permission from Tech Staff so that we could close the line. But they didn't.
So an independent contractor comes out with a little flashing truck and the cones and?
Yes, sir.
Does all that stuff? Because of state.
So unfortunately, it's going to be thirty-three grand, thirty-two plus. We're paying some lifeguard that we had out there and also the boat that had the lifeguard in there and that belonged to the City of Port Isabel as far as the boat was concerned. They were out there all day for three days.
Four days.
Four days. Four days. But that was nothing compared to this. And that was basically it. It was done on the 15th, Grant Access, did a nice article on it. It was in Port Isabel Press. And they tied it in with the memory of the rebuild in the bridge after September 15th on 2011. The other, I'm sorry?
It has one.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, sorry. The other item that I wanted to bring to you all and just give you a heads up is the water line that's, and it's running along Whipple Road. This is Whipple Road. As you see right up there on the, you'll see the Resaca on the north side and it's on the south. And then you have the Resaca on the north side. Right about where that red line is at, is where the 36-inch water line, raw water line that comes in from the river, Reservoir 4, goes into what this pump station eventually and to Reservoir 3 or Water Point 2. Right about to that, on the top is where the bridge is, is at, there's a water line coming in, a corrugated water line.
This is a 48-inch, 48-inch water line that runs south to the port. And it says, let's go, others, this is Florida. And the reserve area, the erosion, that 48-inch line is pretty fast aside. And it's pretty much all the way to the port limits. And, and during effort with the, you see it, and God, it's been on the city of Florida. You know, the one, the erosion event, that should be up here that road. Some of the media is presenting 80%. That is, and this would be, they want to, they want to, you know, there are a couple options with the front end, which is a pipe. But they want to skip into this type, just to take their, their, their things with the pipe. Or do a permanent fix and then leave it and leave it as, as the next pump. But those are just options. We need to be creative, this is our day today. It's still on the, the issue, it's, it's involved. And at this point, for the time to, for the process, and it's the process in there. So we need to be present today and have a major option to see how your process works.
As a matter of fact, we've met with like three or four different times onsite. But the reason for the meeting today is that they pretty much wanted to tell us that we should share in that cost that they're looking at repairing, but we do not agree with because, first of all, that's not our road. Secondly, that Resaca belongs to Water District Number 6. And what caused that erosion was that 48-inch pipe, corrugated pipe that's under there got compromised. And you can see just below there where the water seems to be rippling. It's, when the water flows from the south to the north, it's coming at a faster pace. So that ripple was a lot higher. It looked, it was just bubbling out. And that started causing the erosion. At least that's what we think that caused the erosion. And that's why they're thinking about just doing a quick fix and putting a pipe inside that 40-inch pipe that they currently have. They are going to fix that, they are going to widen that road, but it's not until 2025. And that's going to be more of a permanent fix. But currently, we called them up because of the erosion and we're concerned that if it keeps eroding, it's going to compromise our pipe, that 36-inch raw water line coming through there. And at one time, they were asking if we could cut it off. I said, no, that's it. You're cutting off, they're going to be stuff, Port Isabel, they're going to hide the south pipe as far as the water, and we cannot cut them off as far as the water running in there.
We have easement?
Huh?
We have easement to access those pipes?
It's on the right of way?
Yeah.
What is it, 23 miles worth, right?
It's around 23. Right. Yeah, the first question they asked this morning when we got there was, do you all have a permit to have that water line there?
No, we just put it there for five.
And I said, well, if the county issued the permit, then you all should have a copy of that. That was the last thing.
Yeah, but what you were saying was we predate the need for. We need to pay for any of them.
We agree with you.
I, I mean, I guess, you know, maybe we support, you know, we rig up a way to support our pipe. So as it erodes, it won't sag and break, you know? We've done that before at the course. The water passes under a bridge or something, but I can't imagine any of that would go on.
Imagine the weight of that? About 40 inches, 30 inches. I mean, the lake's got to be.
Also, let's do that to that, there's a second Resaca that we have. Put in a pipeline.
It's further west on Whipple Road.
Pipeline to, you know, very again, to take care of the pipeline.
That's why we need a desal plant, we won't have to worry about it.
There you go.
Counsel, what do you think? Do you have any experience with this, pipes on top of pipes?
I mean, yes, but I would have to talk to the staff.
Have a recommendation for us, let us know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to item eight, District Engineers Report.
Maybe this is fitting that we had the presentation from Seven Seas. And then we're also talking about our seawater desalination kickoff meeting we had with the Corps of Engineers. And so basically, that meeting was held on September 15th. We finally started off that job. And I included the slides from the Corps of Engineers as far as how they're going to be modeling the far reach effects of the seawater desalination for that intake. At the, there's very, there's basically multiple alternative sites. One being right there by the guard shack. The second one being kind of more in the intercoastal channel by the Navigation District Office. And then also repurposing that existing outfall with an intake. So we'll look at all three intakes and for the outfall locations, it'll be using our existing outfall or using an outfall over by the Navigation District Office as a second option. So we were, we established monthly progress meetings. We'll be having our next progress meeting this Thursday, tomorrow. And so really, you know, we're looking at collecting data, first round of data in October and November, and then do another round of data collection in February, March-ish. So we can start seeing the different seasons and how the, you know, the conditions for how the seawater and salinity is going to be affected over time. And so basically, one of the things we'll be talking about at the meeting tomorrow is the flows, like how big are we going to be designing this plant for? And so I think one of the, one of the ideas, I think the fast forward that we're going to recommend is proceeding in a design with a two MGD plant, basically a finished water of 2 million gallons per day. I think that's about right for what we'd be running, you know, running 24/7 and being able to do this RO while we have our surface water plants supporting the rest of our demand. And really what that comes out to is for the intake volume, we'd be looking at five MGD. And then for the concentrate waste, we'd be looking at three MGD. And so that would be tapped into this outfall extension we already have in place with the Port Isabel sewer plant in the Texas pack. I mean, Texas pack, their flows are almost nothing, maybe 15,000 gallons per day. And then our average daily flow from Port Isabel is about 618,000 gallons per day. We have a max flow out of the plant over the past year, 1.8 million gallons per day. And that 36-inch outfall has a capacity of 9.4 MGD. So we expect that outfall to be able to handle the additional tap for the RO concentrate and trying to figure out the details and how we can get through the modeling and having a course study concluded in about a year to back us up would be very beneficial towards that. So that's, that's where we're at with, you know, with, where we're at with seawater.
What if we needed four?
Well, that's where, I mean, we could, we could ask for four. I guess tomorrow's the decision, they're going to want feedback from us for what flow rate to request. And so at this point, I mean, our path forward is two. If you want to say four, we can say it tomorrow. It's our.
What if we had no, no water on a real ground?
Yeah, then our peak flow, I mean, we, seven MGD would be meeting our current summer peak demand.
Yeah, what's our average? Because we would just, I mean, if we were in that scenario, we would tell certain places on the island, sorry, I can't match water today. So what, what do we need to have to reasonably run a water district?
I mean, our average, I suppose, about four, would you say? Then on the high side? Yeah, and this is more of a supplement, you know, just to reduce our averages.
Yeah, yeah. Two to me doesn't, I mean, if it's two, then how do we, what do we do if we had to go to six someday? What do you have to do to get there? Or eight? I'd hate to be like, oh, we have no water except two. We, and everybody's like, well, why didn't you guys figure you needed more than two MGD?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's, I mean, it seems like from our, from our point of, I mean, we're really playing an effort of trying to reduce our dependency on the river. We have that account. I guess, I guess the whole premise of the two MGD is under the presumption that the waters can always be well managed in the reservoir system and we'll always be able to take our allocation. And this will be more of a supplement, you know, and just, just to reduce future growth. Basically, we still have that allocation from the river. And this is just an additional portfolio. So I don't know if that's answering your question.
I mean, my thought on the desal plan is partly that, but also partly what if the river's gone? What if like worst case scenario in 15 years? You know, we did go through a protracted drought for a long period of time. Couldn't get that water out of the river because it just wasn't there. I would hate to say like, well, we only plan to, or a straw big enough for two, you know?
And I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if it was to do this.
So like, the question is, how much does it cost to do two? What would it cost to do eight? How do you go from two to eight if that's what you decide to do?
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, you know, we got to look at a 50, 100-year plan. I mean, that's kind of what the timeframe the Corps is looking at. So if we want a considerate model approach of say, what, eight MGD? And then that'd be more of an ultimate condition. But then maybe our first stage would be in the one and two, just to get it started, but we'd be able to work our way up.
Could you build a train and build sections?
Right.
So we can always add on.
So you can always add on.
And we have the space to add on. We thought about that before. What do you guys think of this discussion? I'd love to hear what you think.
What I would say is, it costs you the same money to apply for a permit for 10 in that day plant as it does for two. So I'd say apply for the largest, and then what comes down to is, I think on the discharge side, then we have a problem, you need that system pipe. You'd be sufficient for attending that day discharge, for attending that production. Because the water's coming off pressure, they have to force it down that pipe. The issue is the intake. So for example, the 10 and a half million I stated earlier was for a 3 million gallon intake. That doesn't just go linear, it kind of jumps up to the sides. So the big question is, what size intake do you put in to start with? Perhaps you put in, say, well, if we're going to permit pretend, we're going to put in an intake that could take five, even if we're going to take two to start with, because then it is a case of dropping in another three, you can pour it. And then what you say is, okay, if we get beyond five, we would have to lay another. But that's the way I would suggest going about it. You always want to look a bit louder. Because again, once people know they've got guarantees, more of their start.
So flying for 10, building the intake pipe that would take five and then only build for two?
Yeah, exactly.
That really seems that.
Once we don't ever have to tell people, you got to turn the water on.
To look at development.
I understand. In reality, it's, it's that far away from that.
I know, well, we, we had to, we had to decrease our product already this year. So we want to be in a position where we don't have to decrease our product. And certainly if we are selling water to our customers and we have a, you know, we have a desal plant, it's going to help with that little bit higher number. And we saw his graph, we may be higher than in five years. He's going to draw cones.
And our decision was, we make it flat enough so where he can add more modules to it. And we mentioned, but you can always expand and couple of waters through the completed. Just room for improvement, that's all it is.
How hard is it to get water from where we are to another water district?
The closest stretch would be on 510 to East Rio Grande. And we'd be needing to run a 12-inch line pretty much. And we'd, we'd be needing around a twelve inch line pretty much from Holly Beach to one of Easter Road.
They don't have any water themselves.
Right, yeah. That will, yeah, I guess that would be part of the coordination effort.
Big customers we currently serve are the still the two thousands?
No, well, I guess now that we're, we're considering units, was it maybe fifteen thousand? Yeah.
Seven thousand, right?
Yeah.
I think we'll have thirty-five hundred in ten year. I will probably double in ten years. So if our average is four, it's going to be down.
The Rio Grande Valley is set to double in size in five years.
And I'm saying just our clients at the end of this road is going to double in ten years.
So as far as.
Laguna Vista back.
Yeah.
And then throw on top of that, all the growth that, you know, north of us, going to the same river. I mean, there's, there's a real need for this.
Plus, I mean, yeah, you factor in West of two halves, I mean, Rio Grande Valley is going to double in size in five years.
So as far as to, to move this, this kickoff forward, are we good with, I mean, do we want to do a, a, a eight million gallon per day plant? Which is essentially going to cover our full district capacity today. But, you know, if that would be a modeling approach for sizing intake structures?
I, I don't know if we could afford that. An eight, an eight MGD plant is going to cost us a little bit more than, you know, four, four dollars.
Yeah, we're going to get price tag shocks. What's going to happen? So.
It, it would actually cost less for units.
Yeah.
For large of a plant.
Yeah.
But of course you need to have that demand.
Yeah.
But I would strongly suggest of go for ten. To model for ten because it's the same cost.
You talked about the permitting, right?
Yeah. And that's what we're hoping to score. It's not just to see whether or not from all the, it's ultimately then getting the permits.
Yeah, I'm in favor of what you said.
They did propose a, uh, paper. Price for five million, which was less than the three million.
It's a great thing. Bring it up, bring it up. Sounds a good thing. When's this decision actually made by tomorrow?
Well, tomorrow is our progress meeting at ten o'clock. It's our first discussion for, for flows. And, uh, but, I mean, they need to be quick or else we're going to be holding up them, start on their model if we don't get flows tomorrow. But, uh, I mean, right now, I mean, we have, if, if we're going to, our first phase is going to be repurposing, say, the conventional filters. And where, we're going to have to get that. Right now, our conventional filters can do about two point nine million gallons. And then after you take the RO out of that, you're looking at a one MGD plant, trying to use existing infrastructure just to save on the initial cost. But, I mean, it sounds like we got to go bigger than, than that kind of idea.
I see.
Right? So I mean, if we're, if we're looking more in the range, eight to ten million, I mean, that's, that's how we can start talking about it tomorrow with the corps. And get it on the right page.
Circle back because good points been made. Like what, if we go into this big, we got to buy whatever we, like, we're on the hook.
Right.
So if we go four MGDs or eight MGDs or five MGDs, we're buying five MGDs.
Right.
We're buying all of them. It's not buy what you use, kind of deal.
No, that's, that's not what he said. He said, we could be on the hook only for the intake for five, but we could build for two. You know what you got to plan?
The same ones. Go, go for what you think you're going to get. So it's going to cost the same cost on the plant as the, as the ten. Build the intake, the intake five. If you're going to start up with a two MGD plant, you start. But we just build the building.
I got it. The infrastructure is set for five. But whatever the plant ends up serving, say it's two MGD, we're buying all the two MGDs.
Yeah, cause, cause.
That's my point. Not really my point.
Yeah, well, I would say even like, like an intake structure, if you're talking about doing some piping in the turning basin and then a lip pump. I mean, you wouldn't be able to size that.
Cause this is still the more expensive way to drink new water.
Yeah. I wonder how much.
You have to, you have to keep in mind that. Keep in mind that this is expensive water, uh, that, that, that desal. Yes. So, so compared to our surface water, this is, this is expensive water.
Yeah. So I, I got you there. That's why I'm reiterating that we're going to buy every, every gallon.
That's what I've always said, wholesale and that water cost.
We're cut off.
Wholesale and that water, those places. No, they are. They're cut off before you're cut off. It's coming.
All right. Well, this is all good workshops up here.
My recommendation would be that we start with the three million and, and pull forward because three to five, three to four million is the average throughout the year. So we can compensate from the micro fluctuations of the rest of the water this year.
Yeah.
Especially during the summer to start off. Then after that, if we see that there's more need.
We can always add. Yeah, we don't want to overbuy early.
But as you said, for many, it's three years, you're three years out.
Right. Like, like, say your intake pipe may be set it up for a ten MGD, but the actual pump for the three MGD, you know, the, the equipment that's not going to last. You build it for the current flow.
You guys have a ninety day drop in plant though, don't you? Yeah, we, we need to talk about that. The unit you drop in?
Yeah. Oh, yes, we do. I mean, we, we have one with the down take. Like portable, and we, we could drop in three of those in, in a month.
Yeah.
Like a compact unit or something?
Yeah. So, so what we, what we said before, sorry.
Yeah. If you could go up to the mic so we can get you on, on, uh, on the recording, because right now we can't hear anything you're saying.
We're keeping you out of Florida.
If you have three words you say. If you go through that process and then you found that you were in severe drought and you needed that water quickly. We could actually drop in containerized units to get that water flowing while the permanent, um, plant was being, uh, okay. So we, we do have those. We have them at, uh, two hundred fifty thousand gallons a day and at a million gallons per day. And we actually have, I think, three or four of a million gallon per day units, a bay of water that could be pulled in on shore.
How many of your clients take advantage of that?
Uh, quite a few we've had to do, but again, tend to be in the Caribbean, they run out of water, scream help. We go out there and do it and then, and then it transfers to a more permanent, a permanent deal.
I mean, I think I need to go Saint Martin, check this thing out.
More than welcome.
Turks and Caithers sounded like more.
Are you ready? I've been in years. I've been in.
Only gallon train for the pilot?
Oh, but it, we need to do that big. So we, we actually still have a couple of our fifty thousand gallon per day, much smaller containers available. And we would adapt one of those for the pilot and just drop that in.
But I guess if what comes first, the other structure, the pilot or do you do a pilot?
Well, I, I'm trying to remember how TCQ just wants to see that we're producing the quality of water we say we're going to. And that it's suitable to go into the drinking water system. So, um, we'd have to work with you, I think, in look at the program. Say, what do we do? Do we just drop a, a flexible hose into the, into the order there and, and discharge it back over there?
Yeah.
Or if you've built the inlet, then obviously we can use that.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's just.
Yeah, because part of this core study is going to get data for like the vertical profile.
Right.
Probably get twenty-five depth, like the, the, we're trying to figure out where that intake elevation should.
Oh, no, we can look at that as well. It doesn't, it's, it doesn't tend to be so, all you're worried about is not putting in oil. Other things from the surface usually more than that. And of course there's a, a limit on the velocity of half a foot per second. Not, not, so that you're not dragging all of the sea level. And, and where you go. So you tend to have, it's just.
You do have problems in that channel though with oil and stuff. I'll show them. You, you have, uh.
Yeah, well, we have, we have a plant in Pureza. I don't know if any of you have seen it, but it's actually a shipping channel that goes right the way in and we have a plant right at the end there. And we just put in at sufficient depth where we just don't have an issue with, you can see the oil we're putting on the surface.
Yeah.
So you, you just, you just make sure that you design for that. And as long as you're not sucking that in, then you're about to be no problem on all.
Cause that would be a problem.
Yeah, well, we have about thirty-one foot jets right there in the garret. So that, that would be actually our, our range after.
Yeah, no, it should be fine. I mean, normally if you, if you'd be down around six feet, you shouldn't really have a problem because you're, you're putting in such a low velocity. I mean, the idea is, is on the intake, because you're having to put in roughly twice the volume that you're going to produce. You don't want to be pumping that volume. You just want it to flow through nice and slow. And then you're pumping from sea level. So that's why the, the size of the pipe we said for three. That, that is like, it's just, it just flowed very nicely and you're only pumping at half a foot per second. So to meet the, the environmental requirements.
Even the marketness of that water wouldn't be a issue?
Well, well, that would, that would be why we're putting up the.
Lowered bottle.
Yeah.
Okay.
Interesting.
Very interesting.
Yeah, very interesting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So my point was get a big enough pipe.
Yes. So I, I, I will, I will tell.
Need a bigger boat.
I, I think our initial discussions are going to be on the range of ten MGD for product water, which puts us at, you know, twenty, twenty-five MGD for the intake. Uh, which, which seems like the right kind of thinking for a hundred year plan. So I think that's sort of, you know, where we can initiate from a modeling standpoint. And then work with our first phase at a one or two MGD, you know, just to get it started.
Yeah.
But the intake structure can be ready to go.
Good. Thank you. Great work.
Thank you.
Anything else?
And that concludes the seawater. I guess we got a, a second item for Long Island Village on the engineer's report. If, uh, so, so basically, you know, we had a good startup meeting with, uh, North American Development Bank, September twenty-first. I think it got our bond counselor, financial advisor rolling. And then of course we have the RFQ out for engineering. So we can, we can check mark the box there, get the engineer into contact. But, but, but pretty much that's kind of a, that, that's really the update. We did get certified payrolls, um, I mean, certified appraisals from the, uh, for the certified area that just defined it user area from the county. So that's going to be very helpful. I think certified appraisals is going to be, what, about eleven percent higher than, uh, than our previous estimates? So, so that, that, uh, you know, creates some less burden on the tax rate from what we presented at the time of the election. But that's, uh, you know, hopefully, uh, the one thing is since we're looking at doing taxable bonds, we're not going to need a reimbursement agreement. But, but we would like to start, um, the engineering in November, December timeframe. So we'd have some expenses ahead of closing. And then, uh, when we do close, you know, maybe, uh, June, July, somewhere in that timeframe, we can reimburse our general fund. And then schedule the first payment, uh, in twenty twenty-three after the taxes. That, that, that's the general schedule right now with, if I'm out of those. If there's any questions on that one. Okay. And that concludes the engineer's report.
Thank you.
Let's move to item nine, consider and discuss for possible approval of workers' compensation renewal.
Chairman members of the board, we need to renew our workers' comp insurance. We are recommending the proper approval of our contract for renewal of workers' compensation insurance to Texas Insurance for twenty thousand and twenty-four dollars. Last year's we paid twenty-two thousand, a little bit more than twenty-two thousand. It was cheaper.
It's very good, right?
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Starkey, second by Mr. Donahue. Are all those in favor? Aye. They are? Are there any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. Item ten, consider and discuss for possible approval of annual contract for asphalt paving and repair projects renewal.
We need to renew this contract. The vendor that we have right now, if it is a proposal for renewal, the same prices for spilling gear. So we are recommending for approval and renew that contract to the empty paving for the annual asphalt paving and repair services.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion for approval by. Didn't go up. Mr. Starkey and seconded by.
Only thing this year that didn't go up.
For all those in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eleven, Director Finance report. Eddie.
So we have, um, the, the twenty, twenty million dollar tax bond, um, that we had. Money that, uh, that we did a cash flow analysis to, um, estimate our, our spend down. And we identified twenty million dollars that we had available to, um, to invest. So we decided to do, um, eight million in a six month CD and, uh, nine million in, in, in a twelve month. Uh, I'm sorry, we didn't go with CDs. We went with, uh, with securities. We did solicitation for both CDs and securities. And the better offers came from the securities. So, um, we got the, the six month at three point eight. And we got the, the twelve month at four point oh five. So that was a, a, a good, um, a, a good result. And those monies were last earning two point two four, uh, in, in a money market.
Good job. What'd you do with the other three million?
Very, very pleased. Uh, we're, we're leaving, um, uh, additional money for, uh, to spend down between now and, and the six months. So that we, so that we have.
Turks and Caithers.
To pay, to pay, uh, expenses for the next six months.
Good job.
Also wanted to let you know that we are, um, doing our solicitation for our depository agreement. Our current depository bank is IBC. And that agreement is going to expire in April, uh, April thirtieth. So it's a long, uh, solicitation because there's a lot of moving parts in moving your depository bank. So, uh, we're, we're already starting with that. We're, uh, we've set out a, a calendar. And, uh, we're, we're reaching out to, uh, banks to make sure that we, we qualify them before we, um, um, do that solicitation.
So we are moving from IBC?
Uh, at, uh, our agreement is going to expire in April and we're going to explore, uh, looking for proposals from different banks.
Have we had any problems with IBC?
No, we're, we're actually pretty happy with them. We, we owe it, uh, to ourselves to do due diligence.
Of course.
Make sure that, uh, we're getting a good deal for our.
Our account manager at IBC.
Ms. Lassana is our, uh, our representative. Yes, Debbie Lassana?
There you go.
Yes. And that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move to item twelve, consider and discuss for possible approval of bad debts write offs for the fiscal year ending.
One more, uh, I'm sorry, one more item for discussion was just to let you know that we are, uh, doing, uh. We have a letter of engagement to, uh, engage CRI for our audit services. So, um, um, the letter is in, is in effect. It just wanted to show that we're, uh, about to get started with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve, consider and discuss for possible approval, bad debt write offs for the fiscal year ending nine thirty twenty-two.
Sorry. Excuse me. So, um, once a year, we, we write off, um, bad debt. We have our utility debt, uh, is two thousand six hundred seventeen dollars and ninety-nine cents. And then we have miscellaneous invoices. These are usually, uh, damages to our property that, uh, we were not able to recover. And that total is six thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-three cents.
These are utility bill proposed write offs. Are we trying to collect this or?
Yes, we, we.
Specifically, the only one I care about, the deceased. We're not, we're not worried about that, are we?
No.
Okay.
No, but they, they are a few, the, the larger ones that we are taking to small claims. Because of the, uh, pandemic, the, the, um, small claims court has been backed up.
Of course.
So we still have, uh, dates that we're waiting for to go to, to those. Now, you know, collecting on those, uh, judgments is, uh, is, is difficult as well. But, uh, we, we're going through, uh, we go through our process of, uh, phone calls, letters. You know, following up with the, uh, skip tracing, uh, see if, if they've left the area, try to get ahold of them. But these are the ones that we've been unsuccessful.
No, many in that staff does a great job of communicating. And I'm sure if it gets to this phase, we've done everything we can to acquire the money. But if they, if they're deceased, we're not worried about that, right?
No, no.
Okay. That's all I was wanting to ask. Thank you.
Anything else?
No. I just need, um, the approval for, um, that you approve of us writing off this debt.
Motion approved.
Motion for approval by, uh, Mr. Starkey, second by Mr. Water. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None? Motion does carry. Thank you. Item thirteen, consider and review expenditures from September one, twenty twenty-two to September fifteen, twenty twenty-two. Everyone acknowledged.
Acknowledged.
Acknowledged by Mr. Donahue, Mr. Starkey, Mr. Friedman, Dr. Lalan and Mr. Water. That takes us to, I all have acknowledged the expenditures. Takes us to item fourteen, that adjourns this meeting at six point five PM.